Call the meeting order, please. Call the roll.
We ain't mad at you.
In a minute, we will.
Mrs. Escalante?
Here.
Mr. Monk?
Here.
Mr. Rickman?
Here.
Mr. Voorhees?
Here.
Mrs. Walker?
Here.
A quorum has been established. Next on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on the agenda is Citizens' Comments. This is the portion of the meeting where you, citizens, can address the board with your questions, comments, or concerns. Be mindful that you have three minutes by which to make your inquiries or your statements. Also be mindful that we ask that you stand to the mic and state your name and address. And last but not least, I ask that you address all comments to the chair. The agenda is now open for Citizens' Comments.
My name is Mary Campbell. I'm the Mount Clemens Education Association Union President. I would like to take this opportunity to thank Glenn Voorhees on behalf of the teachers and the community and the students of Mount Clemens for the wonderful job you have done. We have, as the teachers, have appreciated your support and your knowledge of the sacrifices that we have made financially and with our time and our efforts to help improve this district as much as you have helped improve this district. I also would like to say, I'm quite happy to be the first one to say, once a bather, always a bather tonight to you. So, since I'm a bather, and I hope I can be a bather as long as you are. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
Kind of stole your thunder there a little bit.
Agenda is still open for Citizens' Comments. Agenda is still open for Citizens' Comments. Last final time for Citizens' Comments. Seeing or hearing none, Madam Superintendent, you have an announcement before we move to continue with the agenda?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I'd just like to introduce Chris Vincent and his team from SFE. They're a new food service vendor in the area, and they just wanted to come tonight. This was the last meeting of the year, and they just wanted to come and say hello and give us a couple samples of their product. So, Mr. Vincent, if you have anything you'd like to say. But that is his team, and we thank you so much for the beautiful display, the delicious food, so we can't wait to tear into it.
Well, good evening, everyone. Thank you for having us. We are SFE, Southwest Food Service Excellence Food Service Management Company. That's not all we do. We bring that culinary experience to the lunchroom. We care about child nutrition, and that's all we do. K-12 child nutrition. So, come over, ask us any questions if you'd like, and we'll share with you what we are and what we're all about. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
For the record, it looks great.
Next on the agenda is the Consent Agenda. Under the Consent Agenda, the approval of the minutes from the November 21st, 2018 regular meeting and the December 10th, 2018 workshop minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I will move to approve the minutes of the November 21st regular meeting and the December 10th workshop.
Moved by Mr. Voorhees to approve the minutes of the regular meeting, November 21st, 2018, and the workshop, December 10th, 2018. Seconded by Mr. Monk. Any questions, comments, discussions? Seeing or hearing none, call the roll, please.
Mr. Voorhees?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Mrs. Escalante?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes, motion carries. Next, action item, item six, Business Committee, A, Approval of Bills for Payment. Ms. Walker? Oh, or Ms. Superintendent, whoever.
Step up.
I'm trying to get to the food.
Me and you on the same line right now, so if they ain't gonna do it, I'm gonna move the motion.
Well, the Finance Committee did meet on Tuesday. What, was it the 11th? Thank you. We did meet on Tuesday, the 11th, and looked over the bills for payment, and there was nothing out of the ordinary, but they did look through, you know, for, make sure everything was in order, and it was found to be true. So, we would ask that the board would approve the bills for payment at this time.
Chair would entertain a motion relative to Agenda Item Six, Business Committee Bills for, Approval of Bills for Payment.
So, moved.
Moved by Ms. Escalante.
Support.
Seconded by Ms. Walker. Any questions, comments, discussion on the motion on the floor? Hearing or seeing none, call the roll, please.
Ms. Escalante?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Voorhees?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes, motion carries. Just real quick, to the board, if you see that the agenda has been formatted differently is because trying something different, when we have items that are on the agenda that have gone through the committees, and then we, after we talked about stuff and moved on items, later on, we have the committee reports, and the committee will say, well, we've already acted on what we met on, so instead of going through that, when the item comes, that comes through that committee, then I'm looking to the committee to leave, show some leadership on that particular agenda item and move that item forward. Informational items, Item Seven, also Business Committee. This was reviewed at the Business Committee. A, Open Purchase Order Listing. It's listed in your packet, and are there any questions about the open purchase order listings?
And as you stated, the committee did go through, and nothing was found to be out of the ordinary, but we will entertain questions.
Seeing no questions, this is an informational item, so there's no action needed. Item B, Contract, Contract Listings.
And again, same with the contract listings. This is a report that we add to the agenda each month, just for you to review and see what is coming up that may be expiring, and nothing had changed from the prior year.
Any questions regarding the contract listings?
And I do need to correct that. We do have Edger Staff now, as opposed to that they took over the business from PESG. It has been a very smooth transition. Staff, our contractor staff, is very pleased that when they do make a phone call, they are shocked that they get a phone call within the hour, 90% of the time. Occasionally, it has gone to the next day, but they said they've never had such a quick response, and an actual person answered the phone, as opposed to going through a loop. So, we're very pleased with that transition, and we're partnering very well with Edger Staff, so it's been a very clean, smooth transition.
Mr. Monk?
Thank you. Is it pretty much the same contract or a little different? You saving a little money, or same?
No, it's the same thing, because usually with the contract houses, they have the same rate?
Right.
As far as that go, and, but the response time is, customer service is huge.
So, our employees are getting answered to their questions?
Yes, yes.
Good.
And they've been very responsive. They've come out, I think, a couple days and met with staff and answered any of the questions, and you can imagine how reluctant our staff was, especially with the experience that they had before, and so they were very pessimistic and not a true believer, but since they've talked with them and they've had all of their questions answered, nothing but positive comments, so they are pleased.
Good. Any additional questions, comments?
My question was just, you know, the payroll. You know, we had that kind of a period in there where people didn't get their money, and, you know, has that all been ironed out, I take it?
Their policy is that you get paid the week following, so you're not waiting a month before your paycheck is one week, so the folks...
They're paid weekly?
No, it's paid every two weeks.
Every two weeks, but only a week?
Right.
You see they pay on the third week?
Yes.
Gotcha.
So, they turn it, now the time sheet's on Friday, and the following Friday, they're paid.
That's good.
So, they're very, people are very pleased. And they use also a pay card, so they're loading pay cards for some of the folks, and a number of them like that feature.
Perfect.
As opposed to, you know, paper checks or even direct deposit.
Perfect.
They like the pay cards. So, it's really been a great partnership thus far. Any questions that we've had, they've been very responsive and very open about the way their operation worked, and even giving some ease to the folks with the questions that they had, because again, we've had not-so-great experiences last couple of years with PESG. So, it has been a welcome change.
Good. Any additional questions, comments? Agenda Item Eight, Superintendent's Comments.
Thank you, thank, I am very much looking forward to our students having a relaxed next couple of weeks. Their last day is, oh, it's tomorrow. Wow, it's tomorrow, so they'll be enjoying a wonderful break, holiday break, so wish all of our families and students a very safe, merry, happy holiday season. Get some rest, have fun with family and friends, and share your love. We do have a letter that, in your packet, that we have shared with, that came from North Broadway Church of Christ. Just wanted to say thank you to the board members and to the district for the hand, helping them during their time of need with the passing of their long-term, or longtime pastor, Dr. James E. Thompson. They were very pleased with the responses and the assistance that they got from our custodial staff, as that everyone was wonderful, and they just wanted to make sure that they sent a letter thanking this board for, you know, being available to them to help them through this time. So, you do have a letter in your packet. You'll also see the attendance report, that's the one that has the paper clip on it. You'll see one from King, which was preschool, then the next set that's attached is Seminole, and then the last piece is from the secondary complex. So, they have it laid out, each, how they responded to each incident and the number of incidents that had occurred thus far. That's what that one pack is. Also, I just wanted to give you an update on Lame Duck. We did get some information from our middle cities, and they're just sharing some of the bills that are getting rushed through, through the legislature, and they want us to, you know, pay attention to the bills that are coming up. They, unfortunately, this is a time of year that there's a lot of bills coming at all of our legislatures, and they really don't have a real good time to read through all of them, so, and that's why it's called Lame Duck, because, you know...
Sort of like Glenn.
Yeah, that's right. We're lame duck today. Quack, quack. Still got power. You made one motion.
You know it's nothing but love.
I love it, I love it, I love it, I love it.
So anyway, you have a copy of their comments concerning each of those. And then also tomorrow, we are doing our, it's Professional Development Day, so it's a half-day for the students, so our teachers and staff will be engaged in that process, and we're talking about the blueprint, so we're inviting you, if you want to stop by, we will be having lunch, I believe it starts at 11:30, but it will be over here in the high school cafeteria. So, if you are available to stop by tomorrow, please do so, we welcome you. And the other one, Mr. Voorhees, it doesn't seem like it's been four years, but I greatly appreciate and respect you as a leader, you as a member of this board and this community. You will be greatly lost. I know you have other things that you need to do with your family, and we appreciate that, but I greatly appreciate the time that you've spent here, the countless hours that you've had to put in, you know, doing this work, as we all know, is unpaid work, but you're dedicated to this school district and to this community. So, for that, I greatly appreciate you, and I hope that you won't be out of touch, even though you might be out of sight, but not out of touch. So, thank you so much for all that you do.
Thank you, Teresa.
And that's my comments.
Thank you, ma'am. Item Nine, Committee Reports. Dr. McFadden, Athletic, Ad-Hoc Committee.
We didn't have a meeting this last month. We had a detailed meeting Monday night with curriculum. We had a big talk, a long talk, about a whole lot of issues, so that evening, we didn't bring up much in athletics, and we're gonna be following that in the new year.
Any questions on the chair? Thank you, Dr. McFadden. Mr. Lennenberg? No report.
Must be hoarse tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Lennenberg. Curriculum Personnel Committee?
Once again, Mr. President, the Monday, last Monday, our curriculum personnel meeting usually falls on Tuesday. Last Monday, we had a workshop of the whole. We discussed a lot of issues dealing with personnel and curriculum, so there was no need to have a meeting the next day. I mean, everybody was here that night. Anyone got anything to say, want to chime in, please, don't let me be the one to hold the mic. But most issues that we talked about was well-received, but the superintendent's still doing research on a lot of the, a lot of stuff we talked about. We talked about some things with policy and things with legal, so once we get that information, then we can move further with the other issues that we want to talk about. Mr. Monk, did I forget anything? Mr. Voorhees?
I'm gonna kick that chair.
Ladies?
No, I think you're good.
All right.
Any questions? Thank you, Dr. McFadden. There was no meeting of the Educational Foundation, and I'll take the next one, E, Legislative Meeting. There was a Legislative Meeting, but it was the same night that we had our workshop, therefore I was unable to go, but I know that there was gonna be discussion about pending legislation that's gonna, that was gonna be hurried through the Lame Duck session, and one of those, I don't have the bill, bill number, but it was dealing with giving school districts a letter grade, A through F. And then the other one was about the state appoint, the point, appointing a 13-member educational commission who will take over the responsibility in sort of, like, do the work that the State Board of Education is currently doing. I know those were two bills that were being ram-rodded through the Lame Duck session. I was on Facebook today, and I think I read something where the, the letter grade distinction was passed, and the governor has signed that into law. I'm not sure about what's happening with the 13-member educational commission, but I know the letter grade assessment was passed and signed into law by the governor. Did they, did the Supers ever talk anything about that?
The A through F, that's House Bill Number 5526, that one, and of course, we don't think that's the appropriate thing to do. And the other one was about the marijuana and not having that be on school property, so we would want to treat that the same as any other drug or alcohol and tobacco.
Any questions?
There was one more about the ACA, the Port of Health Care Act. The other thing on that one was, even though it was, one of the judges found that to be unconstitutional, nothing has changed as far as what we are supposed to do. So, until they come to some conclusion at the, at the Supreme Court level, we will continue with business as usual. I just wanted to make sure that everyone understood that, that they're not immediately losing their health care. Whatever you had in place will continue to be in place.
Mr. Monk, Policy.
Thank you, Mr. President. We did, we postponed our meetings due to superintendent working on the budget. We'll take up the, we talked a little bit, we had some dialogue on the new uniform policy that we're looking at, so we'll take everything up next month, and we'll have a report then.
Thank you. Any questions on the chair? Item 10, Board Comments. Ms. Escalante, we'll start with you tonight.
Every board meeting, I start. That's okay. I'm gonna take a little bit longer, so you guys are gonna have to bear with me.
Oh, here we go.
Here we go. Well, by the time we meet again, the year will have come to a close, we'll be starting a new year, and I would like to say that we've accomplished a lot in 2018. There has been a lot of blood, sweat, and tears poured into 2018, and I can't take the credit, but I can speak as a witness to those that have made things happen. And so, I want to send all of my colleagues off with some of my personal thoughts about each of you as you enter into 2019.
I gotta put my glasses on for this.
That's right. Glenn, I'm gonna start with you.
Remember, I'm last.
No, I'm going in order, so you're third.
I get the mic last.
I know. That could be bad. Glenn, I just want to say that you are a kind, humble, insightful man. You are welcoming, and you have a warm heart, and you'll be missed. I remember coming on the board new, you always made me feel comfortable, and it's intimidating getting up here with all of these guys, but we have a new female board member joining us in January, so now it's an even number. Well, we have Teresa, too. So technically, you guys are outnumbered, so. But I just want to say that it's been an honor and a privilege to serve with you for two years, and I know you served for four, but I'm going into my third year. Can't believe it's been almost three, and it's, you're gonna be missed, you really are, and I wish you the best, I wish you many blessings, and I, I hope that you'll pop in and visit once in a while and show yourself. Doc.
Earl will stop me at the door.
I know, I hear you. I just want to say that you are level-headed, you are focused, you are encouraging, and you are committed, and I appreciate that example from you, sitting here, serving with you, so thank you for that.
Oh, show him the sweet thing.
You've been on this board since I was a...
Go, go, Janine.
You've been on this board since I was a student here. Now, I'm not saying you're old or anything like that.
I was very legally, just legal when I got on the board.
There you go.
Just legal.
But I think that that speaks volumes, all jokes aside, and you're committed and you lead, and I appreciate your commitment and your time and your energy and always willing to answer questions. I remember when you called me and welcomed me onto the board when I first got on, and that meant a lot, so thank you. I'll get back to you. Janine, you are kind and sweet and nurturing, and it was nice to have a, another woman on the board that would kind of like take me under her wing, because it was intimidating with the rest of them in the beginning. I enjoy our talks and... And, and so I just wanted to say that about you. Jason?
Oh, Lord.
You are charismatic, energetic, you have presence, and you love life, and you love food, and you love your community, and I appreciate that about you.
Thank you.
And I enjoy serving on this board with you.
Thank you.
Teresa, you have taken on a lot this last year. A lot of obstacles were thrown at you and, and your staff, but you persevered and you continued to keep our district on track, and that showed in our audit, and I commend you for that. You're a wonderful person inside and out, and I know you don't hear that enough, you take most of the complaints on a daily basis, so I just want you to know that I personally appreciate you. And then there's someone else sitting out in the audience that I want to recognize, too. Mrs. Monk, I see you out there, and I just wanted to say that I see everything that you do for our district. I see your, your love and your compassion and your care for our students. I see you, what you do with the Christmas bags and just everything that you do. It doesn't go unnoticed, and I personally want to thank you for that, because a lot of these kids wouldn't have hope without somebody like you as an advocate for them, so thank you for that. Okay, I'm almost done.
Are you leaving the board or something?
No, I'm not. I said in the beginning, I said in the beginning that I wanted to send you all off with positive vibes for 2019, so that's what I'm doing. I guess you could call it a little bit of mutualification. So, thank you all for teaching me and learning with me, encouraging me, and putting your heart and soul into this district. May God bless you all and as well as your families as we get ready to enter into 2019, God willing. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And?
Well, I want to say it with you.
Ms. Walker?
All right.
They're gonna wait to the end to say.
I, I moved on.
Yeah, we'll all say it at the end.
I moved on.
Glenn, I am going to miss you. It has been a wonderful four years. It really has. You're an outstanding human being, and it has been a pleasure and an honor to serve on this board with you and to know you, and I'm going to miss that face, but family is important, and time with family is important. So, and Earl's gonna, I thought he was gonna take a picture of the face, so that would...
Just to remind you.
Next board meeting, eat my tins and gladness, everybody. And I wish all of our families and our students a very Merry Christmas. I wish you many blessings and just an outstanding time off with your family, make lots of memories, eat lots of good food, and enjoy being together. And as a board, I can't imagine being on a board with any finer group of people. I love the time spent with you, I have learned tons from you, and I enjoy every minute I spend with you. So, those are my comments.
Thank you, Ms. Walker. Mr. Monk?
Thank you, Mr. President. Boy, a lot's been said already. I'd just like to take this opportunity to wish all of our district employees, our students, families of our students, a very happy holiday. Take some time, enjoy your family, enjoy some food, 'cause I'm getting ready to when we start over here. So, we gonna start that early, but definitely, you know, just enjoy each other and get some rest, and we'll see everybody next year, in January. My brother, from another mother. We came over here together, me and you, two amigos. I think I said mostly what I said last meeting, but it goes without saying, I am looking forward to your retirement, because what a lot of my board, fellow board members don't know, that we gather, we used to gather once a week. So, now we can get back to gathering once a week. So, let the wife and the daughters know, I'm coming for the homemade brownies and cookies, you know, and a little bit of spirit, but I'm definitely looking forward to spending time together as we both head off and do what we do, but, you know, you are a fantastic young man. You know, as I said, you have, you have the wisdom, you have the charismatic, but all, but one thing that I think when I always see you is that... but all, but one thing that I think when I always see you is that you are such a calm spirit. I don't think I've ever seen you get mad. I'm serious. No, yes, I did.
Don't, don't talk to the wife.
But, you know, I'm gonna miss you, but I'm gonna see you. So enjoy, okay? You did a great job. You know, you brought a lot of energy to this board. You was part of getting a lot of things accomplished, so enjoy, my friend. I know the wife is looking forward. Now we can go at the Port Austin together?
Yes.
And so I really, I really, really enjoy being with you on the board, so. And to my fellow board members, thank you for those, for those kind of comments. You're charismatic, I like that. But I want to wish all my board members a happy holidays. Be safe, again, enjoy y'all family. It's been a pleasure serving with y'all. I'm looking forward to the next four years. I'm looking forward to serving on the board with our new board member. She said I looked different from last time, so I'm like, okay.
More charismatic.
Right, right, right. So. I enjoy, you know, and I'm glad my wife-
It's the part.
Is that what it is?
It's the part.
I'm glad my wife is here so she can see, so she can understand where, you know, what I'm talking about. But those are my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Monk. Dr. McFadden?
You know, I could never get enough of Mr. Monk.
You want to yield your time to the-
No, no. Well, you know, I don't speak that much anyway. I'm gonna be quick, short. You know, happy holidays to all my board members. Wish happiness and strength and wealth for the next season. But I'm gonna jump over to Glenn. You know, a lot of people don't see things behind the scenes. You know, I remember the time we was at a board meeting or a workshop and Glenn was talking about cornbread and collard greens, so.
That's right.
You know, and he makes, he makes it fun. So he's serious, but at the same time, you, you take things into perspective and I want to say thank you for that. I'm not gonna say goodbye. I'm gonna say until we see each other again in Myers or something like that.
Absolutely.
Okay, but definitely, and you do have power to, you know, move, you know, make a motion. You can make a motion probably like a German or something.
Yes, yes.
But other than that, I want to say thank you to the board members and thank you to the school district and thank you to Mr. Glenn Voorhees. Thank you.
Mr. Voorhees?
Well, this is, this is tough.
You had a whole year to give it up.
Yeah, I know, I know. But you know what? I, I, I learned from, I learned from Dave. Keep it short and sweet.
Oh.
So, something, something like that. You know, I may have paraphrased it a little bit. But it has been truly, truly an honor and a privilege to, to sit on this Board of Education. The work is so important and, you know, we, we do it not for ourselves, we do it for those students. And when I see them in the hallway, I know that we've done a great job. We have a lot of work to do, but we've done a lot of work. And to, when, when I was over in Jason's office and we talked about running and, and we wanted to make sure that the school district stayed open and, and we certainly worked at that collectively, all of us together. The one thing, you know, Teresa, I must say that, you know, I was able to work on finance from the day we came on the board and you were an intricate part of that. And we have taken the deficit from some 2.5 million down to, if we didn't have this last business in here, we would've had $18,000. I think that's remarkable. That is a, that is a true achievement. I don't think there's too many districts that can, can talk about that. I won't go around and talk about everybody, but, you know, I'm gonna miss everybody. And we, we worked collectively and I don't think that there was, if we had a disagreement, it was, you know, we hashed it out here and we were done. And we walked out of here and we, we were together. And again, for the betterment of the district. Teresa, my best of luck to you. You'll do a great job, 'cause you're a bather. Do you remember that? And Mrs. Monk, truly, you do a tremendous job and, and you don't get enough thanks for it.
Yep.
Once again, another bather. And with that, for the last time, as an official of this school board, once a bather, always a bather.
I should've went first, but it's always tough going last.
I'd like to move to adjourn.
But I-
Hey, make that move.
You, you worked, you cheered and recognized you.
I tried, everybody, I know.
I'd like to echo some of the same comments that have been made prior to me. To our students, enjoy your time off, 'cause I know you, you've been waiting for this. And I know you're going to drive your parents crazy, being at home all the time, hogging the TV, whatever you do, you know, games and whatever, but enjoy your time off. To our staff, well-deserved, needed break and I hope you do something fun, enjoy yourself, even just sitting at home in a lazy boy chair. Sometime that can be fun and that, and that's what you need to, to re-energize and rejuvenate yourself, because we're only halfway through. And we still have much work to do in, in the upcoming year to our, our winter sports teams that are currently engaged in competition. Good luck to you. There are some issues with some students who are not dedicating themselves to the whole concept of the team and I understand there were some folks that, students that were ineligible. I hope you take this time to get eligible, to, to help out your team because your team needs you. And being ineligible i- is not the way to support the team or to, or to support yourself. Those are your, your student athletes and that student comes first. And that's why those students who are not eligible are not participating right now. There are other school districts that will allow students to participate with a minuscule grade point average. This district dares to challenge students by making them have, maintain a 2.0 commun- cumulative, cumulative, excuse me, grade point average and we, we're sticking to that. And for those students, step up your game so you can step in the game. Mr. Voorhees? I recall maybe a little over four years ago, we, it was Myers, we had a conversation and I had learned that he was considering running for the board. And what suggestions would I, could I give him in doing that? And I shared with him, the easy part is getting elected. All you have to do is convince more people to support you than support the people that are running against you. That's the easy part. The hard part is when you get on this side of the table. Things always seem different when you're not accountable and responsible for the decisions that are being made when you're on the other side of the table. I also share with you, Glenn, if you get on this board, you're gonna have friends that will no longer be your friends. Because they will not like the decisions that you will make and the decisions that you make are based on more information than, than anybody else has. And so that's why you make the decision. I said I was real big with team. Everybody on the board is a collective team of eight. We come to the board table, we bring our best efforts, we bring the best information, we, we argue our points to the point that sometime it may seem like you, you know, you about to fight somebody. Well, that's the passion that you bring and the position that you bring to the table, but once the decision is made by the body, that's the decision that everybody walks out of the room doing. And he, you asked me, well, what did I believe were the biggest challenge is in, four years ago, what I, what I thought was, would be the biggest challenge? And I remember telling you that my goal as a board member would be, one, keeping the doors of K-12 open in this district. Because forever we've heard rumors in the universe that Mount Clemens is gonna close, Mount Clemens is being absorbed, Mount Clemens is doing this, doing that. So one, one thing I told you that I, that was always my goal was to keep the doors open, K-12, Mount Clemens independently run by itself with no state intervention. And the second goal was to eliminate the debt that we had. Knew Glenn from his work when he was a treasurer of, of the city. Knew he had a vast financial background. When, when Glenn was elected to the board, I appointed him to the finance committee because he had an area of expertise that I knew could help the district and thus we, we selected him. I appointed him to, to that committee and subsequently after that, you were elected treasurer, so you're automatically a part. I say all that to, that, say that coming in as new, there was no new, because once you get sworn in, you have the same, you had the same responsibility as every board member that sat around the table, whether you've been here for two days or been here for 40 years. And you blended into the team, you brought ideas and your perspective to the table. Your ideas were thought out, your perspectives were your perspectives and, and we respected that. And we worked collaboratively to, as you mentioned earlier, that was maybe closer to $3 million when you first got on the board to now we're less than a hun- a little over $100,000. And you were an integral part of the team and, and assisting this board move in the positive. So for that, we're truly, truly grateful. And I, and I just appreciate the friendship, the camaraderie that we, that we, we've amassed here on the board and, 'cause the board, I mean, we're like a little family within ourselves, because when our backs against the wall and everybody is screaming at us, we all only have ourselves to turn to and we have to support each other and, and over the last four years, with you being a part of the team, that's what we've done. And I respect and appreciate the sacrifice. A lot of people don't understand the sacrifices that board members do. It, it's more than coming to a meeting once a month and I'm pretty sure Mrs. Monk can attest to that and any other spouses of, of board members can, can attest to that. It, it's a labor of love and I often say, you know, it's been fun, it's been real and it's fun, but sometime it ain't real fun. Because you have to make real-life decisions that impact people. And again, some people won't like you because of decisions that you made and you, you've carried yourself in an honorable way. And this was testament by the comments that were made prior to me about your service on the board. And so- Before I- You're not choking, are you? I need, I need an adjustment.
I was gonna say.
I'd like to present you with the certificate of appreciation is hereby awarded to Glenn Voorhees, board member of the Mount Clemens Board of Education. Recognize your deep appreciation for your leadership and exemplary dedication as a valued member, serving the Mount Clemens Community School District, 2014 to 2018. Earl C. Rickman, President. Teresa Davis, Superintendent. My brother. And I- Oh, it's on some note cards.
Oh, good. That's good.
All those four-letter adjectives we talked about, you can write it down now.
Earl, before you finish up, we got something else for you, Glenn.
I wasn't finishing, but I knew. I knew. I heard about the, the other, so go ahead.
We, we at the board thought you might, you know, you need to keep warm-
Yes.
-in these days, especially at the, at the football game. So what we did is that we got together and got you something to wear, so. And it's something that I think you would like.
Oh, my God.
Oh, the Voorhees.
That's so cool.
And it's also got your years of service.
That is.
So I hope you like that. And on the back, it says, "Once a bather, always a bather."
Good job. I appreciate it. My brother. It is super. Thanks again. And this, of course, is from the Jason Monk collection.
Yeah, that's a throwback right there. That's a throwback right there. So, thank you.
Yes, sir, yes, sir. Would you like to say anything, Mr. Voorhees?
I'm choked up.
This is, this is just great. I love it.
Now, I gotta tell the truth. You know, they always say, "Tell the truth." Now, I got, you gonna have to get it back to me, 'cause we got, we gotta make an adjustment on that.
Would you spell something wrong?
Yeah, I did. Actually, yes, yes, I did. My wife, that's why my wife is here today to contest this. She says, "Do not put anything out until I spell check it." She was not at home to spell check it. So I spelled everything like it sounds, so. So I just tell you-
"A bather."
Right, right. I don't know. I'm keeping it. No, so I tell you like I tell my, I tell you like I tell all of my-
I think you should leave it. I think it's awesome.
I'm keeping it. I love it.
I said, "Y'all, you know what I meant," so I used to tell them all the time, so. But no, I, I'll correct it, yeah.
No, you're not correcting it. I'm keeping it. I love it. I love it. It is great. It is great. Thank you so much.
I brought it, held it up, she's like, "What is that?" I said, "Once a bather." She's like, "No, that's ounce."
It's perfect. Again, you got the opportunity to have a last word, Mr. Voorhees.
I just thank you so much to everybody.
Thank you for your service.
It has been a pleasure. It really has. And, you know, we, we did put a lot of time in, Earl, you know, we do.
Oh, yeah.
And, but it's, but it's for the students, it's for the kids of our community. And again, once a bather, always a bather. Thank you.
Thank you. Those are my comments. The chair would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Voorhees.
Second.
Second by Mr. Monk. Questions, comments, discussion on the motion on the floor. Hearing, seeing none? Call a roll, please.
Mr. Voorhees?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Mrs. Escalante?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Since this is his last meeting, I thought he'd stick around. We'll have a special meeting next week about something, y'all. Yes. Meeting adjourned. Motion carries meeting adjourned at 7:22 in the AM. PM, excuse me. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.